All right, moving on to the next item. It is the organizational meeting. I brought this one up for the simple purpose that we had talked about, excuse me, towards the tail end of last year about when do we do the organizational meeting? Do we keep the organizational meeting in January? Or do we consider making move to, I think we were talking about June. And the idea behind moving it to June was because the schools' year starts in July.
The fiscal.
So the fiscal year for the school district starts in July. So would we want our positions to start in alignment with the school's fiscal year and kind of the school calendar? Does anyone have any feedback on are we happy with keeping it in January? Or would we want to move it whether it's to July or at another point, another point of time? Any real feelings one way or another, Trustee McDonald?
I think it makes sense to have it aligned with the district, with the district calendar, with the fiscal year. It just makes sense to me. Part of the reason is when someone leaves the board, whether they're, I mean, if they're, they're done and they don't plan on re-running for their position, it ends in January. Somebody else starts in January. And it's just, I think the more that we can line up in favor of the school fiscal year, it just makes a lot of sense. Then you have a timeframe that encompasses everything. It encompasses the board's term or the elected officers' term. It encompasses the school year, the fiscal term. I just think it makes a lot of sense, the more that you can align.
I'm looking around to see other.
I don't have any feelings one way or the other, but we need to understand. Who else is on the policy? There's Irene, myself, and, okay, good, good. Okay, so if we decide to move it, we need to consider the unintended logistics that it changes. So we have to be very clear on, there's other things going to change too if we decide to change it. If we decide to change it.
I think elections, newly elected board members or people coming off the board would be the biggest items that there is a chance that you've got somebody in one of the seats and they get sat in July and they're done at the end of the calendar year. And there, because every, one of every three elections, we bring in three new board members. So there's a chance that one of the officers is coming out. And there's always a possibility then that somebody who's just coming right on the board goes into a seat, which has been done before. But just things to consider on that one. We, you want to add?
Well, I was going to say that I think looking at the calendar year, with elections in November, if we had the organizational meeting in June, what would that do pros and cons for those that wanted to be president, vice president, secretary and treasurer? Like, would that then limit people and say, well, I don't want to do it this year just in case because there's an election? Do you see what I'm saying? Like, and I think that's something to also think about. How is that going to affect people? Because I think right now, as much as I would love alignment with everything, so it all starts and stops, ideally with the fiscal year, would love to be able to start at the beginning of the school calendar year. We can't control that. So that's unfortunate. But I think it precludes some people from wanting to volunteer for positions if it is an election year. And I think that's where I don't want somebody to say, I'm not going to go for it just in case. Or maybe, and so that's where I struggle with this one.
I believe that's why it always was in January as the new term began after an election. That's why, that's why it made sense. Most of the districts do it that way still. It used to be in the state constitution, you had to do it in January, but they repealed that. So now it is to the discretion of the board. But I think it was only because of the election cycle rather than the fiscal year.
Trustee Watts.
And I'm just wondering if it's advantageous for us to maybe have some sort of, like a folder of, hey, here are some things that let's look through a calendar year or two and let's see what logistics would look like and be mindful of that. So, you know, if we were to do this, then how would this affect this and how would it affect that? So that maybe we have a year or two under our belts and say, okay, what are the feasibilities of this and what are the downfalls versus the pros and cons? Because I think if we do change it, then I don't want to create a bigger issue for some things that we didn't anticipate. So if we could have a virtual calendar of some sort of saying like, let's, let's keep this in the back but not forget about it because we know that that may happen. So just being mindful of that.
So to make sure there's not unintended consequences.
Correct, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Anything additional on this one? All right, moving on to the next item. Next one, officers?
Officers.
Yes.
All right.
Can you combine the next two or no?
What's the one that's after this?
Officers, then it goes to president, VP, secretary.
Okay, those four are going to be a real simple one. God, now I've jinxed it. I think those four are going to be relatively simple once we get through this one.
Oh, so okay, separate, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, but I think those ones start to get a little bit easier. We are all familiar with this bylaw from the meeting in January. And what I wanted to do was decide, how do we do this going forward? For years, we had done a rotation. When we were at the session in December with, was it Jay Bennett from M A S B, Michigan Association of School Boards? They talked about other ways that districts might do this with ideas. And this is going to get into orientation, new board member orientation, which I think we just approved in the last month or so. Does that sound right, Mr. Mustin? With the new board member orientation, and I'm paraphrasing here, we said that we're asking new board members to complete M A S B's 101. I don't even know what CBA stands for right now, but they're 101 level class of being a board member. We're expecting them to get that done, I think, in six months, Trustee Watts. Does that sound about right?
Yes, but I'd have to double check.
Okay. So one of the ideas is, do you put some, something in there that says that if you run for offices or for the presidency, that you've got to be a certified member, which means you've completed all 100 level classes, if that sounds right? Do you need to have served on the, in one of the roles of VP, secretary or treasurer for the year before? What types of things would we want to see when we are preparing for the 2024 organizational meeting? So I'm opening for, all right, Trustee McDonald?
I just think that that is not the 101 classes or not the only classes that M A S B offers that's pertinent to positions. They have a president's workshop, they have an advanced president's workshop, and I've attended both of them. They're very good, a lot of information, and they give you a whole stack of information that you can refer to. So I think those are really good. I think they're important to have that, that information. Also, with a new board member that's into doing orientation, they have the 100 classes, but they also have offered a boot camp for board members, which I think is really good for a brand new board member because it just kind of starts getting your feet wet and getting you accustomed to the things that you'll need to know and where to start. And the 100 series is really good. It dives into each individual thing like media and, you know, communications and school law and all those things. But the, the board boot camp, I think, is essential for a new board member just coming on and they have no idea what the job entails.
Okay, Trustee.
Hearing what you just said, and boot camp is, yeah, that's the ultimate for a brand new board member. But what you just said to open up this discussion, should there be, should it be certified, taking all this CBA 100 series? I think yes, valuable information. Should they have served in other officers' capacities? I say yes, of course. Do the training on your responsibilities as the president, as the chair, as the leader of the board? Yes, they should. But looking back at things, isn't that what we've been doing for the last many, many years?
Well, the one thing, I'm sorry, I was, I was thinking that the question was right there. I didn't know you were continuing on.
That's okay.
The Michigan Association of School Boards does all their board president training after the elections happen, and most of them happen in January. So you don't have a chance to really be ready to go for January, and I think even February. I think it just is last weekend. So that's one where I don't think we'd ever want to say you've got to have completed the board president workshop before being put in the role because it always happens after the fact.
Well, if you know you're interested, I, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's fine, go ahead.
I, I took the classes well in advance of becoming president because they're always offered, whether, they might start in January. But if you think that you're interested in the position or you want more information or you just want to, what's it all about? You can just take it previous.
Okay.
And they do offer it in the summer too, I believe.
So yes, when, when, you know, I was kind of looking ahead for me back in 2017, I took some training. And when I became secretary, there was, I think it was a national convention in San Antonio. There was a session on, you know, workshop. It wasn't a very elaborate one like they do here, but just starting, like, you know, getting my feet wet and that, you know, there. I didn't wait till 2020 to take that workshop. I took it as vice president. So you're attending conventions, you're doing the training, you're looking ahead that you're going to lead a board, a body of seven. So if you do it right, you shouldn't have to wait till your elected president then take the workshop. You take it as vice president. But my point is, everything you said that we need to check off, that's exactly what most of us have been doing to serve in that capacity, is my point, that's all.
Additional comments on this one? Trustee McDonald?
Just real quick, not only M A S B, but when I went into the role of treasurer, I wanted more information on school finance. And so I made sure that I took, there's a Thurn, I believe it's Thurn, offers a school finance.
Yeah.
And I made sure that I took that prior to that position. So there's a lot out there. I think that it is to the benefit of every individual board member, if they're interested in a position, to have some kind of training. Or at least if you get the information, then you might say, wow, that's something I'm not interested in. You know, so, but I think it's good to have the, the training and, and I think it should be part of the specifications.
Trustee Barry?
So what I'm hearing is maybe keep doing what we're doing, but put some stipulations that you have to do along the way. That's what I'm hearing, so unless I'm wrong.
What I would say is, is that what we're saying is, and this is really for the president, the election of the president, and then everything else will fall in place after that. We feel that it is important to have had leadership on the board beforehand, to have completed, I'll say the one, the 100 level, but to become a certified board member before running for the position. Was there anything else that you had brought up?
The boot camp.
Yeah, the boot camp.
To have gone through some, this is one of those things where I would say we work on the wording of some type of boot camp or some type of training that, that helps prepare you for the role.
I thought the boot camp was more under the orientation.
I think the boot camp was the orientation that was initially, you were mentioning.
Them running for a officer's position.
But what you're saying is, is something geared more towards running the meetings?
Well, I'm, if you're talking about the boot camp for an individual, any board member that just gets newly elected, I took mine. I was very much encouraged by other board members when I first got elected to go to the very first convention, which I believe was in March. It was shortly after I got elected. And they specifically had a boot camp for new board members that was at that convention. And the whole, my whole time at the convention was spent at that boot camp. Now, I do believe that they have others available, like Michigan Association of School Boards and stuff.
Yeah.
But they had one specifically at national convention.
I think that one's more for when you're first elected to the board.
Right, that's what I was talking about.
And, and, yeah, we're talking more about for the, the elections of the officers, specifically the president on that one. Trustee Watts?
Well, sorry, and I don't want to go off topic, but with this, do we, is this adding to the bylaw or is this adding to the operating manual that we were talking about? And not to throw in another layer, but then, bless you.
I don't think the things that we're talking about here would necessarily have to go to more of a procedure manual. I feel like this could be part of a bylaw where we're saying that these are the things that we want in place. What, what do people think?
You know.
I mean, I know the bylaws and the policy, well, more so the bylaws. You want to have a little bit of flexibility and then you've got your procedure manuals to get more.
To get the, right.
So it, it doesn't really matter to me. But I do want to make sure that the board has a feel for already, these are the things that we are looking for when we get to an organizational meeting. These are the things that, that we're agreeing are important for the role. Yep, Trustee.
When I was on the charter commission and we were instructed about how to look at rewriting the city charter, one of the things that we were told by the legal all the time is less is more. You don't want to put so much into something that you don't know how in the future it's going to affect the next generation having to operate under it. So I would suggest that our bylaws stay as nimble as possible in anticipation and that, you know, guidelines can always be added to and from bylaws we already have seen. You, you got to have two readings. You've got to go through all this, you know. So once you place it in a bylaw, it pretty much restricts a lot in the future potentially for future boards who may want something different. So as much as you can put things into guidelines and keep the, the bylaws as strategically focused as possible is probably in the best interest of the functionality of it.
Okay. So from what we've heard so far, yes, Trustee Barry?
So what I'm hearing, honestly, correct me if I'm wrong, we can actually take what we've been doing over the years and add the different layers and policy.
Well.
That's what I'm hearing.
Well, then let me explain. What our bylaw is is strictly the Roberts rules. You nominate and you elect, and that's what we've always been doing.
Exactly, but what I'm saying is if we.
Yeah, if you want, if you want to add some strategies of how you make those decisions, I would suggest doing it under a guideline option. Because the ability, it has always been the ability to, at every organizational meeting, to nominate whoever you want to nominate and to vote in majority vote rules. That has, that is what our bylaw states, and that is Roberts rules bylaws. We also operate under Roberts rules, and that's how, how it functions.
Trustee Barry?
This is, I mean, obviously, this is the reason why we're here tonight, to get to that. So, yeah, we have Roberts Rules of Order that we operate under. Then maybe we can put into our policy that, okay.
Well, it wouldn't be policy. Policy is something different.
Guideline?
Okay, we'll look and, we'll lean on David for the right verbiage there. So somebody gets elected in 2024, a couple of board members say, it's probably a good idea to go take that boot camp and orientation so you're off to a good start. Okay? Then you start advising that person to start taking CBA classes. And by the way, you need experience as a treasurer, as a secretary. Maybe you should attend one of those seminars to understand school financing, you know, the way the state of Michigan does it. And maybe sit down with Tom Wall, get a little education there as you're moving up the ranks. And we get to the organizational meeting. Yes, you can always nominate somebody, but if that person, check, 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 and you bring that person forward, I, I think that kind of keeps the board moving forward. We don't get into that, you know, dividing the board, like, you know, we want to go, we don't want to go back because we want to go forward. It kind of avoids all that. So all three things that we're talking about tonight that we brought up, the important three things is my philosophy is let's, let's, let's work together. Yes, I understand we're not going to agree on everything, but at least like, let's work together. The way to work together is to keep everybody on the same page. So when you get elected with the expectation that eventually you're going to be the leader of this board, this is what you have to do. And we can put it in writing, whatever Mr. Mustin feels that, feels that, you know, where it belongs and put the right wordages in it and we'll go from there.
But then you're talking with the expectation, that shouldn't be part of the, we should always have the ability to nominate whoever and to vote on in the majority rules.
I think I can clarify.
Go ahead, please.
Help clarify because I think the verbiage gets extremely confusing. So my understanding, and Mr. Mustin, let me know if I'm incorrect or anyone else, we have bylaws and policies which are on the same elevation. Bylaws are the rules that conduct the board. Policy are the rules that conduct the school district. All right, correct. So within bylaws, we want it to be as, regardless if we're on the board or not, any board going forward, we would be able to easily understand the rules. My understanding is with the operating procedure, which is a living document that can get changed at any time, you can bring in supporting, supporting details, for instance, for saying like, if you would like the president, if you would like to be president, here are the expectations of the president, here is the time commitment, so that any person who's reading the document could say like, okay, here's what are my expectations would be. And the expectation also would be that not only would I would be giving of my time and whatnot, but then I would be well versed in blah, 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 blah. So, but it's also a living document, so that can be changed as well. So it's not the, it's an automatic, but here are some things that we want you to have strengths in. Because I think during the study session, they said what your strengths might be, we all may have the same, we all have strengths and we all have weaknesses. But depending on, and this is where the study session came into play, with the upcoming discussion with the superintendent, the president, as to what the upcoming school year may look like, my strengths may not fit well with those upcoming expectations, whereas somebody else's strengths may gel well with that.
All right, we're.
I followed you until the end, the last part.
So at the study session, Jay had said that we need to establish and communicate what the upcoming school year may look like. You know, do we have a bond, I think, you know, do we have?
Contract negotiated.
Contract negotiated, like, you know, just thinking like, what can we expect for the upcoming school year? And then he said, think of the skills that you would want that president to have and vice president and so on, so on, that would best complement the upcoming school year. And so, and I think within the operating manual, we don't have to specify those, but I think in generality, just have that established so that we pair who we think have the best skills to complement the upcoming school year. So again, I don't want to tie us down to saying like, these are all of the skill sets that you need because what makes us effective is that we come with various skill sets. And if I'm weak in one, maybe somebody else hopefully is strong in that point. So I think not putting it in the bylaw, number one, but putting in the verbiage in an operating manual.
We're about at the time on this one.
I think this is important. I think this is the.
We're going to come back to this one because.
Okay, let me just like, before I forget, because I'm willing to forget. I brought that up in the December meeting, I brought it up in the January meeting. What does Jim this year have to do with the bond or negotiating with the labor unions? I mean, if that's his strength, what, I mean, numbers.
Well, I'm repeating what Jay had said.
What's that?
I said, I'm, I'm repeating, I'm, I'm trying to, because we've never done that in the study session before where we highlight the upcoming school year.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I get that part. That's why I referred to the minutes of the December meeting at the January meeting. And I looked at Dr. Malakon and said, we have a negotiating team that negotiates with the unions. Jim can't sit with the unions, negotiate with them. When it comes to going off for a bond, we have a team, you know, community members, administrators, what have you. What would Jim, I mean, it's not Jim's decision. It's not, Jim is not the expert on bonds. He would know the numbers, he understands budgets, he understands. I get that part, but for him, what, how, what makes a difference? Let's say me, I don't understand any of that stuff, but I can lean on Dave Mustin or I can lean on Tom Wall, or I can lean on the negotiating team when they're negotiating with D F T. What would be the difference?
Let's move on and we're going to come back to this one.
When you say come back, come back tonight or come back at a different time?
I'd like to still come back, I'd like to still come back tonight on this one. And I'm thinking that we might still come back on, also on compensation and vacancies.
Okay.
Even if it's just that we're going to give like, these are the, call it the marching orders of what we're looking for next. But I think there's more discussion to be had on that one.
Okay.
On the next, it's actually just three, not four. The, the president one, I didn't really have anything on this one. I would bring to people's attention for the vice president, the third bullet point that says, in case of vacancy in the office of president, succeed to the office of president for the balance of the unexpired term. I don't think we would put in any of those things that we might want for the president that we're going to require those for the, a VP to step up. But if you look then at the secretary and the treasurer, there's nothing that says that if the president vacates and the vice president moves up, that secretary moves to the VP and that the treasurer moves to the secretary. So for consistency, would, how does the board feel about putting something like that in place is that if any of the roles are vacated, that everyone bumps up one spot? Yes, Trustee Barry?
That would contradict what the direction I'm sensing we're going because the board voted on a secretary and the majority said, yes, we approve so and so to be a secretary, to be bumping them. Then we're going back to, this is the way we've always done it. Unless, unless we decide to go back to the way we've always done it and put it in writing, that would contradict what you're trying to do.
Now, that, that would also though bring up two different things because it currently says VP gets bumped versus the board gets to do an election right there. So two different sides of the same item. Trustee Dan Brogio?
I kind of agree with Barry. I mean, you know, it's like you're, you're saying one thing, but you're doing something else. You know, I think we need to have a clear line as to where, where we need to be. The secretary's, you know, doesn't go up, you know? Everybody stays in that position and then.
You elect somebody.
We elect somebody to fill that vacancy.
So would we really have this say that the, the VP steps up to the role of the president?
It's the same argument.
Until an election?
I believe that's in the school act. If, I would have to go look at it again, but I believe there is a section that says that the vice president serves in a vacancy of the presidency in the school act. I have to look.
But then what we would need to decide is, is if we voted for the VP to be in that role, would we just have them serve as the president until a new president is elected?
Well, the term is only a year. I mean, we're required to.
I know, and we've got to fill the space in 30 days for the, I'm going back now to the vacancy. We're going to have to put somebody in the vacancy in 30 days.
Okay.
And if the president is no longer able to serve and the vice president has to move up, we still have a role vacant then. So are we electing for a new president to take over the remainder of that year? Or does the VP stay in that role? And then how do we fill that VP spot? Do we have a new election for VP?
Yeah, that, that's what it, it, it would, if we were to do it, first off, you're talking about two, two different things. First off, you fill the vacancy.
Right.
With a brand new, with a brand, with a brand new board member for the interim of the, if it so happened to be the board president who left for whatever reasons. The vice president, and, and I will have to verify, but I believe when I was reading the school act, it did say that the vice president would step in for the vacancy of a president, but it might have just been for meetings. I, I can't remember. If you put the vice president into the presidency, then you have, have a vacancy in the vice presidency, would you keep the other two who were elected to those secretary and treasurer position where they're at and then just elect from the rest of the board a new vice president? That, that is one way to handle it.
Trustee McDonald?
I think that makes the most sense to me because, say you have your secretary and your treasurer, and they ran for those positions, those are the positions that they wanted. They may have taken classes or whatever to learn something before they got in those positions. Then you're only refilling or filling a vice president's position, which, with an election. So I think it makes the most sense to me. But I'm always. But I'm always, you know, open for everybody else's comments, because often you guys change my mind.
Trustee Barry?
I think we're agreeing on a lot of things, but at the same time, we're contradicting what we're trying to do. And, again, we're gonna be adults about it, what we're trying to do. So, last December, I didn't qualify to be nominated for president, I mean, I lacked the leadership, I lacked everything, but I did get the approval of this board as vice president, to give me some time to do whatever I need to do to get myself in position for maybe the following year, or two years later. So I'm vice president in January, and in January, late January, the president moves out of the district. Now I step into that role, what changed? How, I mean, what, what changed for me to serve in that role for another eleven months? That's where we're contradicting each other. We're saying it, we're not listening to what we're saying. We're like, we're okay with the secretary staying there, we're okay with the treasurer staying there, but the vice president?
Well, then we relook at, but first we have to check on what the School Act says about that.
Hundred percent, yeah.
That can go to the policy committee, kind of thing, to see whether, and then, then, you're correct, then we could instead elect a new president. I mean, you know, if, and everybody stays where they're situated.
My gut is telling me, goes back to the cliche, if it's not broke, don't fix it. My gut is telling me that we're gonna go back to what we've been doing, but we're gonna put it in writing. That's what my gut is telling me. After we have this discussion, then we'll take it back to committee, we'll do some more work, and we'll go from there. But that's, that's what I'm feeling right now.
And again, the whole reason I brought this one forward is seeing that the president, vice president would step in, but what would happen then to that role? Would everyone else bump up or not? Trustee?
Well, and I think, I think there's too many unknowns, I think we need, we need to look at what School Act says. Because I think trustee Barry's saying is correct, like, if he gets, right, if, if, if the VP gets bumped into P, but we have verbiage that says you can only be the president with, or we encourage people who want to be president to have X, Y, and Z, then what? Then we're contradicting ourselves by putting in that verbiage, so.
We're contradicting ourselves, but then we're under extraordinary circumstances.
So I, I think, yes, I think this one needs to be looked at.
For this to happen is pretty rare. I mean, we did have a cycle where we rotated a few people. Only one was president at the time.
Yeah, again, we don't want to set up future boards.
No, I'm talking about, yeah, for future boards, so we want to be clear on what we're doing.
It sounds like the first steps is to go back to what state law states on this one, and then we can bring it back to the, the policy committee to talk a little bit more about it. I don't know that we've given policy an idea of, of our preference between us voting to fill the role that's vacated versus, I'd say we're probably more leaning that way, versus everyone bumps up and then fill the treasurer role, is that, would that sound fair?
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
We'd be more likely to wanna, to take a vote to fill whatever position was vacated, versus bump everybody up and then vote for a new treasurer.
If we change anything at all.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Trustee McDonald?
Go, Ms. Clark, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to add something, going back to the presidents. With this statement here, I just think that it should be added that the president or his designee is in charge of being the one voice for the district and answers communications. Because I think that's something we all agree on, but it is not in our bylaws.
What are you referring to, I'm sorry?
So going back to 171.1, the president, adding a third bullet point that says, the president or their designee will respond to all correspondence on behalf of the board. Which has been what we've been doing, but it's not there.
Right, I think it should be there.
Okay. Would anyone have an issue with that?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I think we did put it, but we put it under a different, under a different bylaw.
It might have been in a policy.
No, I don't.
It wouldn't be policy.
It would be bylaw.
It might have fallen in.
I'll look into it, but it does, the verbiage does sound familiar, but I don't know which bylaw it would be under, but I'll look.
Okay.
And I know we had talked about recently, I think it was in the policy, that, just a reminder that any board member speaking is speaking on behalf of themselves and not the full board. I do believe that one was, was one that we just covered recently. Let's move on to the next item. I think we start to go to the policies next. Policy 7230.
So, technically, the request was to look at the guideline 7230. I included policy, I included policy 7230 just as a point of reference, in case you wanted to go back and look at that. But the detail's really in the guideline 7230, and I believe that's where the request came.
And trustee Barry, I believe this one was brought forward by you?
Correct.
So what items or what parts of these did you want us to discuss?
This was a guideline that was updated, and, hold on, I have all this, sorry.
Seventeen.
Yeah, May 8th of 2017.
And you're looking at the, the guideline?
I'm looking at the guideline.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm looking at the guideline before it was updated. I don't know if Joanne remembers these books? I, I found the old guideline there, because when we updated, you kind of lose what it used to look like. I'm sure we can always dig it up. But it did say, when it comes down to gifts, I mean, obviously the words had to be changed, because we don't have an associate. So I'm looking at the old guideline, page one, letter F, and it says if the associate superintendent, obviously we don't have an associate superintendent, probably say, it doesn't even address this here, well, it does say the executive director. Says recommends, recommends acceptance of a gift, the item is to be placed on the school board agenda for action. So, earlier in the week, there was an email that went out to a citizen that's been reaching out to us, and it says, interpretation needed for policies and guidelines. Of course, policies and guidelines are always open to interpretations, that's where we come in, unless they're state law. But, I personally have a problem when there are gifts coming to the district that we don't know about them. If it's a simple, you know, fifty dollar gift, or a gift card, or something, that's okay, but when it's something of value, like major value, that does affect things, I think we need to get back to that, where it should be approved by the board.
Isn't that what this says? Says the item is placed on the school board agenda for action?
That's what, yeah, that's the old guideline.
I'm looking at the current guideline.
Tell me where.
Uh, F. It says, if the executive director recommends acceptance, the item is placed on the school board agenda for action, a letter of thanks is written by the superintendent to the donor.
Okay, you are correct there, but I'm mostly, I'm mostly referring to vendors, and I'm glad that David put the other, thank you for that. Vendor relations. So let me just put a scenario out there. We have somebody we do business with that's giving, bringing in gifts to the district, major gifts, that the board's not aware of. How do we feel about that? That's a question if anybody wants.
So are, are you saying outside of the policy? Like, there's a gift coming in and we're not being, we're not receiving information about it, or we're not accepting that the gift was made?
So if there was a gift, I mean, okay, let's say there's a gift of tickets. It's not like just your regular twenty-five dollar baseball tickets, tickets worth, you know, maybe hundreds and hundreds of dollars that are coming in, is that something we want to know about? Where it might affect, or might look, because I've had a vendor, I've had a vendor say, thank you for approving so-and-so's position. I said, oh wow, the credentials were amazing. The guy literally left, I mean, he said, oh yeah? You know, your districts love to eat and drink. And I know what he was saying. If we're gonna be adults, I know what he was saying. I would like to know if, if Roxanne and I went someplace and somebody spent a thousand dollars on us, I think the board is entitled to know that that happened, from a vendor.
So we're talking more about an ethics issue, it sounds like to me, than?
Well, yeah, I mean, ethics comes under gifts, I mean, there's one, two, three, four, five different ways that we're trying to control it. Why wouldn't that rise to be brought up in front of the board?
So the way I would understand point F right here is, is if there is something that's brought in, that's, they're usually going to a specific school or several schools. What you're saying is, any gift, whether it's going, not just to the school, administration, the board? Okay.
Yes. Yeah, ethics, I mean, that's, should be.
And we've got like the conflicts of interest.
Do we already have a policy for?
There is a conflict of interest, a policy, I'm, I don't want to search it on this computer, because it'll change the screen, I'm searching it on my phone.
Okay.
And the college has one as well, that applies to the board for any, you know, of those types of vendor gifts, I think would apply.
Do we currently have anything?
Can, I, I've got the ethics, the board ethics, and, and I think it would be, avoid being placed in a position of conflict of interest, and refrain from using their board positions for personal partisan gain.
But that's personal.
Right, but I, it's kind of, if, if you're getting a ticket or a meal, it sounds like that would be a personal gain, I would assume.
But, but if they're, if, true, even though the, we'll, we'll go down the dark hole where the vendor is trying to give us something to carry favor for an upcoming vote.
Right, I guess, I don't, I don't know what he's referring to.
Or it's not, us, it could be the administration, an upcoming appointment.
Right.
That we, as a board, sit here and say, oh wow, okay, yeah, we trust your appointments, approved, we move on, but there was something else in the back, in the back room that happened.
Trustee Dan Brogio?
So, sitting on the board of ethics for the city, basically, they have a value of two hundred and fifty dollars, acceptance. They had a situation where a supplier gave them all coats, and it came to us to decide what that number should be that's acceptable, as far as, you want to call it, if you have to, to, whatever you want to call it. So, the city's rule of thumb is two hundred and fifty dollars.
And is that for anyone on council, anyone in the administration?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That's something that, going in that direction, I would be in favor of.
We would have to decide where it falls under, does it fall under this one, does it go under conflicts of interests, ethics? I'd kind of leave that then to Mr. Mustin and Ms. Clark to figure out that part.
Falls under ethics, it falls under conflict of interest, falls under a lot of them, but we need to put it a little bit more, we need to tighten up a little bit, where I, as a board member, want to know if there's a vendor out there picking up an eight hundred dollar tab, just for alcohol. I want to know that upfront, you know, hey, okay, so-and-so did that, at least when there's other things going on, at least I would know. If it's somebody at a convention spent, you know, fifty, sixty dollars to sponsor a breakfast or something, then it falls under the
Right.
Two hundred and fifty, two hundred, whatever we said.
If you put a value to it, you know, yeah.
Yeah. But when vendors are spending big money.
But then you'd have to have somebody being the whistleblower, so to speak, to say, speak up and say, hey, I know so-and-so got something, and, and that's why we have an ethics board at the, you know, so somehow would, you would have to know about it.
Believe it or not, Mary, I'm not saying that you wouldn't believe it, you would believe it, this Facebook thing is very telling right now. That, when that, when that, when that vendor threw that in my face, I did what, you know, most people on Facebook do, and go back on Facebook, and it's like, oh wow, there's eight people at this game, and I'm sure he wasn't lying to me, he was telling me the truth. What do I do with that information? I just?
Well, and you don't want to wrongly accuse anybody either, there has to be a process in order to that.
Exactly, and that's what.
Because anybody could say anything.
That's why I brought that forward, we need to get to it, because you never want to, you don't, you never want, you know, everyone's got a great reputation, this board's got a great reputation, we're like, you know, seven strong individuals here, very well respected in the community. When you get a vendor that thinks that he's dealing, he or she is dealing, you know, the way the old times used to be, just throw a couple money at so-and-so and you get your way, that doesn't, that doesn't feel right when it happens, and that happened to me.
Well, we have to, I, I think what our, our issue is, is that we don't have something like that spelled out, more than likely, that I can recall, that at least has a dollar value to it. We have an ethics for us, for administration, for, I mean, we do have it, but it doesn't have a dollar figure, so I guess that's a contradiction we have.
Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, just real quick, I think instead of having like the ethics police, once it's written down, it's solidified, and then I think people are more.
Hit the brake.
Hit the brake, and it's not a gray area, maybe I can do this, maybe I can't do this. But if it's solidified, it's written down, then they know, and their job or their reputation or whatever could be in question, so that puts the brakes on it.
So would we be in agreement that we would put something in the policies, and I'm not going to say the dollar amount, I'll let the subcommittee figure that one out, but that we would at least, we'd want to put some type of, of dollar amount there that we want to know about, or the, this is the limit is what can be spent.
It would give more guidance, so somebody would know whether they had crossed the line or not.
And it doesn't mean crossing the line, so like, let's say, let's say two fifty, just because it was mentioned, and it's less than two fifty, no big deal, but if it gets to five hundred dollars, you need to bring it to the board.
Well, and that could be part of the, that could be part of the guideline. If this is the dollar figure, you can take without, you know, worrying about it, and after that, either bring it to the board, or you don't accept it.
Trustee Watts?
Why not just have it added to board briefs? Saying if it's been spent, if, if this was above this threshold, place it in board briefs. And just let us know about it, so that we don't.
Well, we don't add to board briefs.
Correct, but saying that, well, I guess how would you report it then? How, I mean, if we put that into the guideline, saying that if it's X amount of money, it's
How are we going to?
How would we know? What's the reporting system, I guess?
The other things I guess we'd have to figure out is, would we know if somebody is giving us something called as a friend, or because they're looking for a favor? And, the other thing is, are we looking at a certain timeframe? Because you know somebody, if we put, say, two fifty, they're gonna find a way to get us two forty-nine. So they're just underneath it and not even doing it.
That's where ethics and everything else comes in, that's not what I'm looking for, I'm looking for, if, if, if I'm taking a group of people to a hockey game, and this vendor's spending X amount of dollars, I think I would want my board to know. If I'm dealing with an attorney, and this attorney just a couple weeks ago gave me two tickets to Michigan State and a U of M game at the Big House, which those are probably a couple thousand dollars right there, I would want the board to know. I would, as a board member, I would want to know. Why are we doing more work with this particular vendor compared to another vendor, and this happened? Very good point that was brought up here with my colleague to the right, Roxanne McDonald, is if you put it out there, then people are getting a little bit, a little bit less hesitant. There's many times where you've been approached, I've been approached, all of us have been approached, and people like, say, no, no, thank you, no, thank you, I'll pay for my own dinner, and it's alright. Because I don't want just the smell that somebody was taking care of my dinner or my coffee or something like that, we've always been there, and we do that. So, yeah, I mean, it's happened. You know, I, we, but we need to somehow, somewhere protect the reputation of this board and this district.
Trustee Dan Brogio?
I think basically, it's, it's letting them know that, you know, this board needs to be made aware that you're, let's use the two fifty limit, that, you know, that's your limit, and, you know, anything over that should be reported to the board.
Trustee Moses?
Yeah, I think there's, I just looked it up, extensive bylaws, or policies, sorry, on vendor relations, and it talks about gifting. And it's very detailed, where it even mentions
You said it's in policy?
Yeah, it would be in.
It is a policy manual, yeah, six thousand finances.
Which, what's the number?
P zero six four six zero.
Sixty-four sixty. 6460, policy 6460.
Can you say that one more time, trustee Moses?
6460.
It looks like Mr. Mustin is pulling it up.
Last time that was visited was in 93.
Okay, so then this would be one that we would definitely wanna have the policy committee work on.
And the finances, 6,000.
He's, he's already got it pulled up, he's just writing a note.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Anything else on this one before we turn this over to the policy committee? They've got an idea. We kept using the $250 number, but no one ever said that that is going to be the number. It, it can come back to the, the board with, with more information. Anything else on that one? All right, that was, that was really the last one. We had the policy and the guidelines, but they were all combined, right, trustee Barry?
Correct.
Okay.